All right. Good evening. I would like to call the City of Mount Vernon City Council Meeting for March 26, 2025 to order. Would you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one C is the roll call of council members. Oscar City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton, here. Councilmember Brockman, here. Councilmember Perez, here.
Councilmember Hudson, here. Councilmember Mullinar, here. Councilmember Chisaram, here.
Councilmember Vanderstee, here.
And singing along. Thanks Becky. Item two, approval of tonight's council meeting agenda. Council, have you proposed changes to the agenda or a motion to approve it?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Motion by Mary and a second by Richard. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Consent agenda is approved. Item three is community comments. And as always, if anyone is here to address council tonight, and I will preface this by saying there is a CDBG public hearing tonight on the agenda, so if you're here for that, we'll ask you to hold tight. This is for council member comments and just the opportunity to address city council. So come on up. Rosalinda, you can, yeah, yeah.
I don't know about CDBG.
Oh, yeah. No, this is just open.
You can lift the sides so you can see everyone? Will that help you?
That would be helpful. Thank you. Good evening, council members and also the public that's watching us tonight. I wanted to join you because I wanted to address the city council's effort to create a work group or a task force to discuss or to address the resolution that we have as community presented to you, a resolution to try to have an actual accountable mechanism for the city council to show the community that the Keep Washington Working Act is actually being enforced in the city of Mount Vernon. And so that is a very important effort that the community has brought to you. The formation of this group was created to try to establish a process to have a conversation with the hope that there's a clearer understanding of what the concerns are of the community, community-wide. And we believe that the ordinance actually has all those concerns in it. Those are the concerns that we have. Most of all, the ability to have accountability that the, that the Keep Washington Working Act is actually being enforced. We know that the city of Spokane has passed this type of, almost exactly the same ordinance, and they are in the process of implementing it. So there is a way to do this. It's not an impossible task. And consistently, we think that passing these kinds of resolutions or ordinance or mechanisms in communities that, that are public, that allow the public to come and address their concerns related to especially immigration and immigration enforcement, and the availability for community to be able to speak to it is really important. And that this is one way that trust can be built. When the public sphere, which is the governance and the work of the city council and other tax-supported and tax, you know, what do you call it, paid by citizens' taxes, agencies and departments of the city are actually being made public, that they're benefiting everybody and that nobody is being left out, is important. The, the city, the ordinance that we presented or the resolution, whatever mechanism you want to call it, is important to us. We brought that. Those are the concerns. Additionally, I met with you all this afternoon. We, as community to community, we were asked to be part of this group. And we, based on what we knew and many blanks that we still couldn't figure out what this task, this group was going to be, what kind of power it was going to have, what kind of mechanisms it looked to implement, were not created. They were, they were going to be created within this task force instead of a more public effort with, with the city council. We, as community to community, decided to not join this task group. We feel that there are ways that we can support the city, support our community in helping to establish more accountable processes for the Keep Washington Working Act. We think that this is the best way to build trust in democracy, in the process that has been established in the, in the elections of the city council. Additionally, I just wanted to, now I'm remembering, I didn't say my name for the record, which is Rosalinda Guillen. And I'm actually, our workplace and where we spend most of our time is actually in Ward One. And so we are coming here with community members from, from Ward One. In the meeting that we had this afternoon, I mentioned the issue with a community member from Mount Vernon being detained in the Northwest Detention Center, who had mentioned to us that he had actually been stopped by a Mount Vernon City Police Officer, and that that police officer had called ICE or had called Immigration Enforcement, and that he had been detained and sent to the detention center. At that, at the meeting this afternoon, I mentioned to you all that we actually had an attorney that was interviewing him to try to clarify some of these, these issues. And that interview has taken place. And I want to let you know that in clarifying the incident more, it was not a Mount Vernon Police Officer that had detained him, that he actually thinks it was a Skagit County Sheriff that had detained him. And so we're still in the process of trying to figure that out. It was a black, unmarked vehicle. And within a couple of minutes of being stopped, ICE agents showed up and pulled him out of the vehicle and took him to the detention center. So there are still a lot of issues that need to be clarified with that detainment, which does involve possibly a Skagit County Deputy Sheriff. We don't know that yet, but the investigation is continuing with attorneys speaking with the, the person. I bring this up because I think that the ordinance that we're presenting to you with the mechanisms for training, accountability, and reporting back to the community about what you're doing to enforce the Keep Washington Working Act is going to create a much cleaner and clearer path of showing that you actually are implementing the Keep Washington Working Act, but also building trust with the community, that they know that you are making this effort and that you really believe in trying to protect the immigrant community in, in the city of Mount Vernon. So understand, the reason that we're coming to you with this is because we do want to build greater trust. And we want to build the mechanisms that we know have the accountability that the community can trust in and have clearer discussions. We think that implementing this ordinance or resolution, or whatever you want to call it, with these accountability measures, is going to be beneficial for you as a, as city council members, with the trainings to be, have everything more public, and especially some of the mechanisms that we're asking for, like annual reports by the Police Department and other city agencies to be reporting back to the community publicly about what it is that they're doing to implement the, the Keep Washington Working Act. It is about our effort to try to build trust in this, in the city government, in the, in the city agencies. I think that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Are there comments, folks here to? If you could let us know your name and city residence, first of all, welcome.
Hi, council members and community members represented here tonight. My name is Araceli, and I work in Ward One. I'm here because I'm afraid yet again for community members. As we are probably all aware, our community member and farmworker activist Alfredo Juarez, known as Lelo, was violently detained yesterday morning without reasons or even though he has no criminal records. We believe this was an unjust and political motivated. Because of these cases like Lelo's, we ask for you to pass the resolution and implement it. I feel this will, this will help build trust between you and us, the community, the community. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Dean.
Hello.
I just stated your name, but if you could say it for the record.
I will indeed. My name is Dean Snyder. It's my privilege to serve as the CEO of Skagit Valley Family YMCA and to reside here in Mount Vernon City. My comments are more lighthearted than the very serious issues that we're all facing right now, that I also want to acknowledge. However, today, I'd like to bring to the City of Mount Vernon this resolution of gratitude from the Skagit Valley Family YMCA Board dated February 25th, which was our February board meeting. The Skagit Valley Family YMCA creates positive community change through relationships by empowering the mind, body, and spirit of all. And but embedded in this mission statement is the acknowledgement of the many community partners who take steps forward to make this possible. It is with sincere appreciation that the Skagit YMCA Board of Directors makes this resolution of gratitude to the City of Mount Vernon for its support of the Oasis Youth Shelter rebuild project. The Skagit Y acknowledges the investment the city has made in the local YMCA and in our community, having designated significant funds for the, for the construction of the new and expanded Oasis Youth Shelter from its HB 1590 sales tax intended to support affordable housing and related services. With these funds, the new Oasis Youth Shelter will bring additional support to more unstablely housed youth and will meet the specific needs of at-risk youth in our community. The Skagit YMCA Board of Directors thanks our friends and partners on the Mount Vernon City Council, Mayor Peter Donovan and his staff, and the good people of the city's Department of Development, who have worked on this project. With appreciation, we recognize the city's commitment to good governance and meeting the needs of our citizenry. The Skagit YMCA Board of Directors is grateful for the collaboration with the City of Mount Vernon in making this rebuild a reality. Thank you for your service and thank you for your support of the Y, Y's new Oasis Youth Shelter. With gratitude, signed, the Skagit YMCA Board, Cynthia Gidey, Dan Barard, Ron Ken, Treasurer, Morgan Curry, Dustin Johnson, Gotham Kinney, Brad Methner, Elizabeth Midszewski, Laura Pennington, Audra Ramerman, Jennifer Sasse Walton, Margaret Simpson, Tony Smith, Peter Vandermeulen, Shelley Vendiola, and Dean Snyder. Thank you. Thank you for your support of youth in our community. By way of update, the walls are up. At least the lower level walls are up. The trusses should be on site this week and should be going onto place next week. So it'll start looking like a house very soon. We know that things may happen, but the plan currently is that we would have occupancy sometime in the middle of June, that we would spend the month between June and July in training new staff in that new building. And, and then we would host a, celebrate the Y Open House for Oasis on July 17th, in which you would all be, of course, invited, as we'll invite the whole neighborhood to this open event. Again, thank you for your service. Thank you for your support of youth in our community. And if I may leave this with you, is that, is that something I can do?
Yeah.
Thank you, Dean. Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Dean. Thanks to your board as well.
Hello, community. My name is Isaac Gavazos. I live in Ward One. I'm here tonight to express that we will not be joining the proposed work group. However, we strongly urge the council to make immediate action by passing the resolution that has been proposed, which clearly states that the city council will not comply with ICE and will enforce the Keep Washington Working Act. This resolution is an important step in safeguarding the rights and dignity of our immigrant and refugee communities. By passing it, the city council would send a strong message that our city stands firmly in support of all residents, regardless of their immigration status. It would reaffirm our commitment to ensuring that every individual is treated with respect, fairness, and protection under the law, free from unjust federal immigration, immigration enforcement. We urge the city council to prioritize this resolution and to take concrete action to protect our community members from the harmful ICE practices. Passing this resolution is the best way to make clear that our city will not participate in federal overreach and will enforce policies that promote justice and safety for all. This is the best way to build trust within our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Joel Dryden, and I come as a resident of the city. I live in Ward Two and just have, these are going to seem like pretty petty comments, but I've been waiting months to come to this meeting and, or any meeting. And this is what worked for me. So I come as a, not only a citizen, but also a, bring a level of professional experience as a professional forester and work for Pilchuck Tree Farm, which is a privately-owned timber company, South Town, which addresses a couple of things. So I essentially do a lot of roadside brushing and control, herb side management, whatnot. There's a couple safety concerns around the city that stick out that I just wanted to bring to everybody's attentions. Probably falls in the Parks Department's hands, but hopefully it'll trickle down. The Colson Trail is a, you know, a major park. My wife said runner and runs on that park a lot. And I've seen the, the new city brush cutter, beautiful machine. Seems like a really easy half-day project to send somebody down that Colson Trail, mow both sides of it, set it back on the right away. Be such a safer environment. It would just, as a user of the trail, it wouldn't be as encroaching. Real easy, simple fix in-house, like send an employee down, mow it. Easy peasy. Easier said than done, I'm sure, but Riverfront Park also, when you compare Mount, City of Mount Vernon's Riverfront Park to City of Burlington's, everything in Burlington's mowed back, full access to the river. There's no funny business going on in the Blackberrys. It's the complete opposite over on the west side of Mount Vernon. It's, a lot of improvements been made, I've noticed, over the years, but again, simple improvement, few hours of brush cutting here and there when they can find time. I realize that that's not as easy as it might sound, but seems like a softball to me. Wanted to bring up some vista, view shed management on Little Mountain. There's going to be serious, you know, fast forward 15, 20 years, those view sheds will not be in place if you don't manage that brush to a certain extent now. And there's also fire concern, so there's probably some state funding available through DNR for grants for fuels reduction on the south side especially. And this one's not as much of a softball, but I wanted to throw it out. Possible one ways along 10th and 11th that would mirror those north of Division, in between Division and Broad Street, because it's a, it's a zoo with those, not even talking about speed, speeding, because I know you have no control over that. And we could talk about it all night long, but it's the one ways. I feel like that'd be a positive thing, but I'm sure that's been brought up before. But anyways, those are my petty little gripes. Just wanted to say thank you. So, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Hello, City Council. My name is Lucy Madrigal. I'm here, I am a resident here in Mount Vernon. I'm in Ward One. I'm here today to urge you to pass the resolution we presented to you in February. By passing this resolution, you would demonstrate the building of trust within our community. Recently, we learned that the sheriff helped ICE detain one of our community members. And we know that ICE called Mount Vernon Police Department to let them know they would be around. How do you think that makes my community feel? We believe a work group isn't enough. We presented to you what it is we need, and that is for Mount Vernon City Council to pass that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. That was almost a race.
Good evening, council members. My name is Vanessa Marine, a fellow community member from Ward One. And I am here to express my concern for my fellow community, further express my concern, and to address the disturbing incident where a local farmworker activist, Lelo Juarez, detained by ICE in our community. And to further reiterate, Lelo was exercising their rights when being questioned by ICE, and his rights were disregarded, thrown out the window, and detained him. As a community, we're outraged and saddened by this. It's unacceptable that ICE would violate someone's rights in our own backyard. Council members, I think we can all agree that our city's values are built on being inclusive, respectful, and protecting each other. So why crumble up these core values when it comes to not only race, religion, gender identity, but also immigration status? I urge you, we all urge you, to passing the resolution we've, we've provided you, implementing its provisions. It's a crucial step toward ensuring safety and accountability in our community. If you're committed to protecting the rights and dignity of all residents, the rights of all residents, we urge you to start with this resolution. It's a tangible step toward creating a more just and inclusive community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor. City Council and community members. My name is Caroline Bichetto. I am a coworker and friend of Alfredo Juarez, who, as other community members have already mentioned, was violently and unjustly detained in Skagit County yesterday morning while he drove his wife to work. He is currently in the Northwest Detention Center in Tacoma, despite having no criminal record. At just 25, he is an internationally recognized organizer for farmworker rights. And it is our firm belief that he was targeted for his nonviolent political work. In the words of Representative Rick Larson, "The Trump administration and ICE have claimed they are going after the worst of the worst, but there is no indication that Alfredo Juarez and the other people detained today, yesterday, represent the worst of the worst. Immigrating to the United States is legal. Union organizing is legal." It is surreal to me that last Friday, Lelo was eating carne asada with me and educating me on state policy between advocacy meetings that we attended in Olympia. And today, he's in a detention facility where conditions are so inhumane that detainees regularly go on hunger strike. His arrest has been absolutely devastating for his family and community, and I can't begin to imagine what he himself is going through. Lelo's case emphasizes more than ever the importance of ensuring the Keep Washington Working Act is upheld. The Keep Washington Working Act restricts Washington State and local law enforcement agencies from actively enforcing federal immigration laws, protecting immigrant communities from unnecessary contact with federal immigration authorities. Lelo himself was actually instrumental in getting the Keep Washington Working Act passed. And it is for him and all others like him that we fight to ensure it is enforced to the fullest. We know that the Mount Vernon Police were the first to issue a statement saying they will comply with the Keep Washington Working Act, and we want to thank you again for that. We also want to clarify that when we asked the city to pass our proposed resolution a month ago, we were not asking you to pass a redundant statement that holds no weight, as was mentioned in, in the hearing around the resolution. Anyone who read the resolution would know it is a request for the city to uphold the promise made in your statement by implementing necessary enforcement mechanisms that are not built into the Keep Wash, Keep Washington Working Act. We ask that the city implement formal education around the Keep Washington Working Act for city employees, and we ask that the city implement a mechanism for tracking violations of the act. These pieces are critical to ensuring that the act is in fact upheld. And if the city is already taking these steps and following the Keep Washington Working Act as strictly as you claim, we don't understand the strong pushback against adopting a resolution that makes these commitments. You said three weeks ago that you don't make resolutions as a rule. It makes no difference to us if you call it an ordinance or anything else, as long as these essential measures are put into place. Yesterday, the Mount Vernon Police posted on Facebook that they, quote, "are committed to protecting all members of our great city, ensuring every person feels safe and supported when interacting with members of our department," which again is, is great to see, great to hear. But in order to feel safe and supported, the community isn't asking for more conversations. The community isn't asking for reminders of statements that have already been made. The community is asking for concrete action. The community is asking that these enforcement mechanisms are implemented. And these are mechanisms which Spokane is already in the process of implementing. We are calling for Lelo to be released, and we are imploring Mount Vernon City Council once again to do everything within its power to make sure more of our beloved and essential community members don't end up where Lelo is now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Hello.
My name's Kevin Moss. I am a proud resident of Ward One. Here again, just to talk about housing. We have a community that is excited to talk about having more neighbors. I think some of you may have seen that several weeks ago at the library with the comprehensive plan meeting on housing. I don't know, there was 60, 70 people there. People are, are excited about having growth, more neighbors, more people here. So tonight, I brought you some visual aids to talk a little bit about housing. Back in February during comment time, I urged you to come up with written draft policies on housing, and I'm back with maybe some comparisons and then maybe some written policies for your consideration for updates to the comprehensive plan. The clerk has distributed a paper with color-coded land use charts for Burlington, Anna Cordis, Cedar Woolley, and our city. Each chart shows how that city's acreage is divided up, left to right, into single-family residential, that's in white, multifamily, that's in blue, mixed-use, that's in green, and non-housing land, that's in gray. Either those colors is further divided up into different zones with a few details for each zone, the density, housing units per acre, and the largest type of building that is allowed by right, where you could get a permit without having to get a conditional use permit. Finally, I estimated the percentage of land, it's besides parks and cemeteries, which I assume will never be redeveloped, that each city has dedicated to each zone. While these are just estimates, it does allow pretty clear comparisons to be made between Mount Vernon and our neighboring cities. So if you look at the, at the sheet with the four different cities, you can see, in Burlington, fully half of the land is available for multifamily or mixed-use development. Hundreds of new apartments Hundreds of new apartments are being built every year. Anna Cortis doesn't have as much vacant land available, but its pro-housing development code means that old lots are being redeveloped into middle family and small multifamily all over its core. Anna Cortis has a very compact core. Even Cedar Wally allows mixed-use commercial along the length of Highway 20. You're seeing some development there, and I think you'll see more. Meanwhile, in our city, only 10% of our land is zoned for multifamily or mixed-use buildings, and dense housing is not allowed along most of our main road corridors. For example, along most of Riverside Drive and much of, of College Way, and even along La Venture, which I would consider a dense corridor, you can't build very much multifamily. We don't need to have exact land analysis to know that the future Mount Vernon chart, I put one on the back for you, needs to have larger blue multifamily and green mixed-use areas on that chart. We don't need to measure our vacant land to know that the gray area where housing is not allowed should shrink, and the white area of single-family housing should allow more middle housing, more triplexes, more townhouses, things like that. We should prepare to discuss these changes as soon as possible, how the city will accommodate another 5,000 homes over the next 20 years and over 10,000 new neighbors. We should be excited about people who want to live here and make places for them. Good policies will complement our city's strength. So again, I'm saying, let's get some drafts on paper. Let's get discussion going with all of those people who want to turn out and talk about it. I look forward to that, and I look forward to any questions you might have on my colorful visual aid. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin.
My name is Christine Coner from Mount Vernon, Washington, and I'm here to talk about my friend Lelo, who's also known as Alfredo Juarez Afreno. And he was taken by ICE yesterday in Cedar Wally. I know Lelo is a member of C2C and indivisible Skagit. He puts his heart and soul into supporting our farmworker community. He is kind, thoughtful, and attentive. I also know that Lelo knows his rights. And we have talked about getting information out to our immigrant community on what their rights are when ICE approaches them. Therefore, I'm positive that when ICE stopped his car yesterday near his home in Cedar Wally, that he stayed in his car and asked them to show him a warrant. Had they shown him a warrant, I'm sure he would have exited the car and followed demands. The fact that his window was smashed in is indicative that he was taken by force. There was a recent incident in Spokane that went viral and a similar scenario where someone was taken very violently from a vehicle and was not, their rights were not respected when they wanted to see a warrant. They just smash windows and grab people. My question to you is, what can our community do when our laws and our rights are being broken by federal agents? I know that many assume that the Mount Vernon Police Department was involved because they had to put a statement on their website that they were not involved in that incident. And you can see how this builds like into a crescendo of distrust in our community when these things are occurring. So we had the January incident, and then we have this going on. Then we have Rafael Garcia. And these incidents are building, and they reflect our own community, even though you could say, well, that was ICE. You know, I feel like there's something that you can do to contact our legislators and say, this is going on in our community. It's making our relationships more difficult. Something to speak for the problems that we are seeing right now. It is those that are most at risk in our communities that need to see you and feel your support in your statements and actions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to the City Council of Mount Vernon. I'd like to comment on a few matters of city code related to housing.
Sorry, I'm just gonna pause right there, Liam. Can you share your name with us and your residence, just for the record?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Liam Depice. I live in Ward One of Mount Vernon. I've come to talk about housing. As we've heard, other cities in Skagit County have set a great example for how to potentially change our zoning code to make housing easier to build and make it easier to welcome more neighbors into our city. And state laws related to zoning and other housing codes are also making this easier. However, once zoning becomes easier, there is the potential for other city codes related to housing to be unnecessary obstacles to infill development. So I'm here to humbly suggest that some of them, the following code changes be considered. First of all, reducing lot setback requirements, or the distance between a housing structure and the edge of a lot. The neighborhood that I live in was annexed into the city of Mount Vernon in 1908, and many of the structures there were built before these current lot setbacks went into effect. And many of them don't conform with our current standard. But despite that, there's not really unintended consequences with regard to the appearance of the neighborhood or vehicle access or any other unintended consequences that may have been brought up related to reducing lot setbacks. Along with that, reducing the minimum lot size will allow infill development through lot splitting. That is, I believe, a bill that is currently under consideration in the state legislature. And finally, eliminating parking mandates for housing. The idea behind this isn't to force people out of their cars by any means, and the result will certainly not be the complete absence of parking in Mount Vernon. What this will allow is developments with varying amounts of parking, so that residents and businesses can decide for themselves how much parking they need for their use of the land. In conclusion, growth of our population is all but inevitable, but our current codes limit how much the housing market can adapt to provide homes for our neighbors who need them. In addition, if we can't welcome more people to the city without huge expansions of the city limits and urban growth area, it'll be a bunch more difficult for the tax base to grow with the cities, as the city's expenses also grow, and more difficult for the city to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Council.
Hello.
Ellen Gamsen from the Mount Vernon Downtown Association. I'm here just to offer a little background for a matter that you'll be considering later on in your agenda this evening. The Downtown Association has come before you and through a special event process, asked for street closures and the like for the upcoming Tulip Festival Street Fair. For the first time in quite some time, we've asked for extended space for that event. And I wanted to share with you the background of that. Being a progressive city, Mount Vernon has, over the years, increased accessibility by adding wheelchair bumpouts and the like at our intersections and on our crosswalks at mid-block. I commend the city for those actions. And related development to that is that in the street fair management, we now have adjusted our layout to allow for those places where the street is more narrow, single rows of booths as opposed to double rows of booths, which had traditionally, in 40 years, been the way the streets have been organized. And I thank again the city of Mount Vernon for loaning us GIS staff in 2019 to work on this process. In that process, we did lose some real estate, which is how we raise funds for our nonprofit operations. We've asked the city to allow us to extend that event another two blocks to the south. And for the purpose of kind of making up some of that lost revenue, our costs of management in terms of security and facilities and sanitation have continued to rise. And we hesitate, in fact, refuse to pass those costs along to our vendors who are also struggling with their increased costs. So for us, the, the solution is to expand our footprint a little bit to try and mitigate those impacts. And that's just a little background that I wanted to share with you before you consider this later on this evening. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I think I like the side way. Rosa Linda is here. Lisa Ellis, and I'm from Ward Three. Different, different ward here. And thank you this evening, Mayor Donovan and Councilmembers. And I'm just speaking also in regards to encouraging you to help pass the resolution that was presented for the Know Your Rights in February. Keep Washington Working Act, excuse me. And I, along with other comments that were shared earlier in regards to how to make tangible action, and I, I think there was a committee today, I, I don't know who all was on that, but I, I want to share the urgency of committing to this. I know people who work here who have, you know, various working arrangements, you know, their green cards from Canada, and they come back and forth, no problem. They're not, they're not really scared about what's gonna happen to them. Because they probably look like me, some of the Canadians that I know. They're not as scared of being caught by ICE and, and not having due process, right? So if I'm getting pulled over, my son or my husband, I'm pretty sure I'm gonna be get my, have my rights. I'm gonna be able to say this, this, and that, and I'm gonna have my rights. And so we know that there are specific things targeted, like our friend, my friend Lelo, that I've can call him my friend for the meals and things that we've done together in caring for our community. And so I just, yeah, I really urge, just with rumors going on about things that could happen, soon, other people being detained without due process, without warrants, without, you know, with families being split apart. It's, it's, it's really concerning that we know that it isn't going by the law. We know that, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that ICE is not doing by the law. And so we're glad that we have people that can respond to these things and find out and help get documents and record things because those can be taken in the legal proceedings down the road. So just thinking of all the things in the Keep Washington Working Act that Washington has, and just thinking how it's in our best interests and your best interests as council and, and mayor, and that we really stand together, that we can, you can stand together and support the resolution as it is stated, and work on those, that we can work on those action steps in the future here, and in a timely way. Because we know this, this is a very difficult time for youth and for people working and, and for the future of our, our region. So I just thank you for this time. I thank you for continuing to listen and serve, each of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hello. Good evening, members of the City Council.
Hello.
Mayor, my name is Caleb Sprouse. I'm a resident of the city of Burlington. I am also a reporter for the Skagit Valley Herald. I'm here to take a brief moment of your time to introduce myself. I am the beat reporter for the city of Mount Vernon. I'm actually going to read my phone number into the record in case you ever need to reach me. It is 573-292-9024. Yes, that is not a number from Washington. I'm from St. Louis. Thank you again for your time. I look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprouse. Anyone else wishing to address Council this evening? All right. We will move on to item four tonight's. Did we do the consent agenda? I feel like we did.
Yes, we did.
Oh, we approved the, we approved the agenda, but not the consent agenda. I lost track. Item four is the approval of the consent agenda, and it includes meeting minutes, payroll checks, wire transfers claims, and an agreement with Council like to move for adoption.
I'll make a motion. Second, I'll second.
Motion by Navore and second by Melissa. All those, any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item five is committee reports. For committee reports tonight, Council held its monthly Finance and Parks Meeting at 6 o'clock, and Councilmember Molinar is the chair for that committee. Gary.
Okay, we opened up the Finance and Parks Enrichment Services Committee meeting tonight at 6 o'clock after the approval of the February 26 meeting minutes. Doug Valeski gave us an update on our current investment balance for the year. Ending 2024 was $34.9 million. This is made up of long-term investments, which make up the largest portion with that being 29 million. Short-term investments include funds in the state local government investments, investment pool, and cash. He then moved on to a scenario at the, at the new jail, and we are looking at needing more additional contributions. 100% of the city collections of public safety sales taxes transferred to Skagit County to help with funding of the jail. The county established a fund balanced to be known as a revitalization, stabilization account, and currently we're, are, there's a shortfall. And our contribution has, has to go up a little bit by 84,000. So the projection is that the fund will also go below the, that required balance in 2026. So they're looking at different ways to make sure that's funded. The 2026 budget planning has already started. We're looking at some deficits and working very hard at being proactive and not waiting until November. Some of these things are, it's gonna be kind of a hard situation, but we're looking at possibly a four to five million dollar budget shortfall. So a lot of decisions coming down the line here. Next, we moved into the solid waste, front-load, commercial truck purchase. If we did it right now, it was in our budget and would be $471,000. If we order it now, it will save nine to 12 months on our production time. So we are gonna probably move forward with that. Next, Jennifer Burner, our Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec gave us a report about spring and summer programming. There are gonna be a variety of issues, volunteer opportunities, free summer youth programs, free community events, Touch Truck, Earth Day, Fourth of July Youth Art Festival, youth program, and sports programs and camps, dance, free art. Actually, and kind of another one is, interesting one is the archery clinics with silver arrow bowman. That's kind of a newer one. Adult offering also included art classes, fitness classes, and dog obedience classes. Arts Commission, they're working on doing a mural underneath the bridge coming under Holg Road and I-5. They're planning on doing that probably by the, this summer, and are looking at an artist to help with the goal to be painting this summer. After that, we close the meeting at 6:53.
Thank you, Gary. Next up is the report from the Development Services Committee last week, and Councilmember Melissa Beaton shares that. Melissa.
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, we met last Wednesday, Development Services Committee. And first up, we were briefed on monthly metrics of the department. Staff have seen an uptick in our permitting. The department currently has four open positions with two additional positions, staff that are retiring later in the year. After that, we moved on to a discussion about the Eaglemont Development and the Blackburn, Blackburn-Wa Road connection. We, Director Prashner shared the history zoning and the current development landscape. Just brief little history here, Eaglemont consists of six- Just brief little history here, Eaglemont consists of 670 acres that is zoned RA, which is residential and agriculture. That type of zoning is intended to balance the need for housing, for housing development while preserving the character of a rural landscape with a PUD overlay. It's complex. The master plan originally had a 27-hole golf course clubhouse, residential uses throughout the neighborhood, a neighborhood center, along with other public infrastructure. And then along the way, there was a triggering for the Blackburn Wa extension road improvement. So once there was an EIS threshold, we needed to look at now the road that could connect it. So recognizing there were many revisions to the master plan being requested by the developer, and I should roll back to Eaglemont came into existence in the late 80s, early 90s. So recognizing that there were revisions being made by the developer, a process of monitoring and implementing the plan in various phases was essential, as there was none. So that creates a potential of entitlement investing issues. What land use regulations do we use? Do we go back to 1989? Do we do? So you see where I'm going with that. Because there was a recognition of the lack of progression over an extended time, the need to reserve the city's legislative authority to alter course, and no benchmark for the city to evaluate the overlay zone, a developer's agreement was recorded in 2010. This allows staff and council to make informed decisions on policy, defines how to process modifications, what's the criteria, submission requirements, details about the PUD, or how long is the plat effective, legal standards, all that stuff. It also requires staff to review the master plan periodically and make recommendations regarding underlying zoning during its annual land use docketing process. So in the end, the city continues to reserve its authority to modify, amend, or repeal the Eaglemont master plan. Considerations can include preserving a traditional neighborhood, adding mixed use, or affordable housing component. I'd want to emphasize that no one is suggesting the zoning be changed from residential agriculture, but it is important for the city to review from time to time what our zones are, you know, how things are looking. So a little bit more about the Blackburn Wa, this extension has been in the city's master plan for approximately three decades, and the city is exploring avenues to achieve a 30% preliminary design to understand what is possible, is anything possible at this point. It does not lock the city into a project, but we do know that it's going to be very expensive, given what little we know about the topography of that land. So it's important to understand, as the city densifies, part of our due diligence is traffic concurrency, along with densification. You look at public services, facilities must be considered, improvements must accommodate development impacts. So you're looking at traffic, where do we add more lights? We're looking at public safety, we have to look at the capacity of sewer, parks, staffing, everything is impacted. So then we got a brief history of Hidden Lakes. Hidden Lakes is the land that is directly across from Little Mountain. It is approximately 176 acres zoned R1, so four lots per acre. It was purchased from a bank in 2015, and then the owners immediately logged it. So DNR placed a moratorium on it for 10 years. That moratorium is up next month. Currently, the land is looking like it is mostly a mosaic of wetlands, streams, and slopes. So what it was originally intended for in 2010, we're not going to get there in 2025. Next up, we talked about the downtown EIS, which is the environmental impact statement. OTAC is performing the work for the city in 2026, and it's going to cost around $200,000. That's required to identify the impacts of proposed projects surrounding the environment. So it assists in understanding the impacts on our air, our water, our soil, or our people. It promotes responsible resource management, ensuring sustainable development can improve, and can also improve a project design. The city is moving forward with providing this preliminary work to assist in catalyzing downtown development by also streamlining zoning requirements. We then got a brief little update on our CDBG applications. They're ready to review, we have been reviewing those, and we will, you will see that there's a public hearing on tonight's council agenda. Additional agenda requests, council has invited the two Dyke districts, 17 and 3, to give presentations in the near future, to hear the status of our Dykes and how the city can be involved. And we are also going to be exploring removing overlay zoning, reviewing our setback policy, height limits, neighborhood commercial zoning. It's believed that we don't need to wait on our buildable lands analysis for that, but staff is going to give us a briefing here in the next month. Also, off under miscellaneous, the city is adding a nurse practitioner to the fire department, I believe, and that will allow prescriptions that will, that the nurse practitioner will assist our iOS services team in, and they will be, they can issue prescriptions for folks. Insurance coverage is not provided through the city's insurer, which is WCIA, so staff has found a broker, it's going to cost around $50,000 to be funded through our 1590 funds. That was just in our consent agenda that we just passed, and then we wrapped up at 8:10.
Great. Thank you, Melissa. Item five B is council member comments, and I will turn it over to council for any comments.
I just have a real brief one. We often hear about things that don't go right with people or anybody. Well, I'd like to, I'd like to say something positive about one of our employees. I had a constituent come to me and tell me how much she enjoyed, I'm going to call them the garbage man, because I'm not sure what the politically correct word is, in her neighborhood, that he was, he was very kind to her, her daughter, and her dog, Brad Sokol, if I'm saying, I hope you're saying your name right, but I just want to give you a shout out. And I have talked to Andy Hansen, his boss, but I just wanted to thank him for being a good guy.
Thank you, council member Hudson. Mr. Sokol is a good guy, and he's an excellent solid waste technician.
Thank you. I knew there was the right way to say that.
I don't know if that's the right way to say that. That's probably not better. But thank you. Any council member, other council member comments? Yeah, council member Broxton?
Well, I appreciate the testimony earlier today, and I realize just how important this conversation is on several fronts, but very disturbed yesterday to have a phone call about Alfredo's detention. And it's a, it's a real hit to this community because Alfredo is an amazing young man and has shown his care for this community, and it's a symbol, I think, of how, you know, well we have, how well we have it, what we have done in this community for people to live together, to learn from each other, to respect each other's cultures. So it's just, it's a devastating piece of news to me, and I couldn't imagine what him and his family are going through. So I just wanted to echo some of the things I heard that folks, I hope, one is I hope folks will keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers, but even more importantly, I hope you will call your federal legislative officials, Patty, and our, you know, other senators, and Larson representatives, and our governor, and let them know that we want them to do everything within their power until he is home safe in the community where he belongs. And I know I will not rest until, and if there's anything that I could do as an individual, and I hope this, I believe this council will do the same, he's a great member of this community. So I wanted, I wanted to note that, and I think, I just wanted, you know, I want to be careful and tell the line here, but I am disgusted personally by the dysfunction in our federal executive and legislative governments, that they have not solved these issues in 20 years, and they need to do that. Because it's unfair to this community who relies on each other, that we don't have an appropriate, you know, consensus perspective on what's in, on immigration in this country. And so it's just disgusting to me that our executive and legislative branches at the federal level have not solved this problem in 20 years. So I wanted to put that out there and ask you all to please take those actions to help our friend. Second, we are working with the committee to listen to people with lived experience in these difficult times, and this council is not opposed to the content of that resolution. We have, we try to avoid resolutions that don't affect us. Now, these issues do affect our community, and so rather than ignoring it and saying no, we want, and we have, set up a committee to listen to each other and to continue to be educated and have dialogue about what's going on, because this city cannot just adopt a resolution that we don't fully understand all the implications and what we need to do to make sure anything we do is appropriately thought out, and that our mayor has good direction to activate those things. And so we need the community to sit down with us and educate us, and that's the point of the committee. And so I'm just going to, this may not be very popular, but I'm very disappointed to hear community to community say that they're not going to participate in this committee that we set up, to get educated about what we can do to help what you're asking us to help you with. And so I just encourage everybody to recognize that dialogue is the answer, dialogue is democracy, and we want to solve these problems, but we can't solve the problems if we don't know what to task the mayor and his agencies to do, and how to talk to other agencies in the state and the federal government. So, sorry, it's very emotional week for people, and these are tough issues, but we need to work together.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No apologies needed. I see council member Vanderstoep is online with a raised hand.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you for all the testimony, and I was shocked to see what happened to Lelo. And I hope everybody here is aware of a rally that will be taking place tomorrow to support him, that's all. Thank you.
To member Correia.
I just want to say thank you to Richard Brachman, because everything what he said is, everything he was, I was planning to say what he said, because we would like to send this message to the community, the whole community, because we just have one community, Mount Vernon community, and all of us here, all of us here, we are here for the community. We do the best for the community. I think everybody in Mount Vernon wants to do the best for our citizens. I was, yesterday was a very tough day, I had many phone calls, even from Olympia. Alex Rommel was the first person who contacted me, later Andrew, my colleague, and other phone calls from the school district, and what should I do? Of course, I was devastated to see what happened to Alfredo, and I know this guy, and I know it could be any one of us, or anyone from the community, it would be the same result. But also, I'm going to say, yesterday we spent three hours on the phone, calling to Olympia, to legislators, to the governor, we sent emails, and even today, we sent letters from the community, signed them, by them, asking, being with us in this issue. I just want to, just to repeat and confirm what we are doing here and what Richard said, we are here for the community, and of course, we want to work hard together, because other than that, we are not going to move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, council member. Final thoughts, comments? All right. Going to move on to mayor's report. I guess I'm going to, I'm going to jump in as well with a quick update on today. Wanted to follow up on that ongoing conversation that was formed for the purpose of discussing that resolution that some of the members from the Bellingham-based Community to Community Group brought before our city council to consider for adoption. Today was the day that we hosted the discussion. It included myself, council member Beaton, council member Correia, Mount Vernon Police Chief Dan Christman, Mount Vernon Assistant Fire Chief Brian Harris, Mount Vernon Prosecutor Jeff McCann, Mount Vernon Police Officer Edgar Serrano, and Skagit 911 Director Allison Everbeck. Also invited, two members of the Community to Community, C2C group, who unfortunately weren't able to stay for, for much of the conversation, but they did share their concerns at the meeting before they left. Also invited representatives from Triumph Teen Center, Community Action Latino Advisory Group, and Indivisible Skagit's Immigrant Support Task Force. We met around a table for about an hour and a half today, and we talked face to face, which I have to say is way more productive and way more personal than all of the one-way communication that happens in today's politically charged climate. We, I believe, we accomplished more in an hour and a half in terms of a level of understanding that we never would have reached in probably a year and a half of online social media posts or political memes or podcasts. We were honest with each other, we listened first, and then we made a collective decision to, to take action, and, and to take action together. And I think we felt that in the end, that is the one thing that we have to fight for, and that's, that's our community, our togetherness. Those of us from the city, I think, maybe showed up feeling strongly about all of the ways in which the city's made attempts to communicate our intent to, to police the city legally, and for the department to follow the Washington state laws that govern our actions. But what I learned today was that there, there may be far better ways for us to communicate to the folks that the city is trying to reach. And for that, this, the city is going to need to rely on the leaders who were in that room, within our various immigrant communities, to emphasize our commitment, city council's commitment, the Mount Vernon Police Department's commitment to follow state laws like the Keep Washington Working Act. And so I think we'll get there. I, I am definitely going to be leaning on, on our new friends to, to help me refine the city's messaging a little bit, definitely learned something there. And city officials will continue to make ourselves available for ongoing community presentations that, that have been happening, for forums that, that we've been attending, in which we can connect with our community members on their terms, on their turf, and ensure that their questions are answered and that their concerns are addressed clearly. There's a lot more work to do, but I, I left the meeting today really feeling reassured that everyone who was in attendance there is willing to do the hard work of maintaining unity, even through our disagreements, for the sake of providing as much comfort and safety as possible for all of our residents. So that is what's going on, that is the conversation. I would invite, if you're listening to this and thinking, I would love to be part of that conversation, let me know, and we can, we can add you to that as well. It's mayor's report, though. And it's tough to shift from immigration to, slide one is, it's Spring Cleanup Day. A really popular day in Mount Vernon is the annual Spring Cleanup Day, because it means that our residents can dispose of an average-sized load of yard waste, and an average-sized load of bagged garbage, and an average-sized load of bagged recycling, all at no charge, to residents who bring their printed March and April, March or April, City of Mount Vernon Utility Bill and your ID to 1010 Shop Lane. City of Mount Vernon Utility Bill and your ID to 1010 Shop Lane. That's where our city shop complex is. And again, that's three average-sized loads, one yard waste, one bagged garbage, and one bagged recycling. What if I have three loads of yard waste? Only one of those can be dumped for free. So if you need more clarification on what can and can't be brought to our April 5th Spring Cleanup Day from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., please visit the city website at www.mountvernonwa.gov for details. And next up, our next Mayor's Coffee Event is tomorrow morning. That's coming up kind of quickly. We're gonna be at Skagit Valley College this month. So please park there at the the visitor lot at 2405 College Way. Join us at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow, March 27. And we will be in the Knudsen Cardinal Center Multipurpose Room. So kind of that main entrance there. If you follow it back, the Knudsen Cardinal Cardinal Center, you'll find the multipurpose room. This is yet another opportunity to find out what's going on in Mount Vernon, to bring whatever city-related questions that you might have, also ideas that you might have for discussion. And I hope to see you there tomorrow, 10:00 a.m., Skagit Valley College. That is your Mayor's Report for March 12, 2025. Thank you, Steve. And we are moving on to new business. Under New Business, Item A is a public hearing for the city's 2025 to 2026 CDBG Annual Action Plan. And here is Special Projects Manager Steve Sexton to introduce this item to Council.
Steve. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So this evening, we do have our first public hearing for our CDBG Annual Action Plan process for 2025 and 2026. And this public hearing provides an opportunity for the council to hear from funding applicants, citizens, interested parties, and others who want to share their views on the housing and service needs of the city. Based on these discussions and the council's awareness of community need, community needs, the funding decisions made as part of the 2025 Annual Action Plan will help the city move closer to achieving our CDBG objectives of providing decent housing, creating suitable living environments, and expanding economic opportunities. These are the objectives outlined in the 2023 to 2028 Consolidated Action Plan. I want to note that CDBG allocations have not yet been determined yet by HUD for this funding period, much as the same as last year. So with that in mind, we're just gonna estimate, make the same estimation of funding availability as we did in 2024 for this process until we get that determined later this year. And our next step will be taken on April 2 at the end of the Public Safety Committee meeting, when we will present the Annual Action Plan Funding Worksheet for council consideration and deliberation and have some time to think about that before we bring that back for finalization. And we'll get this thing wrapped up hopefully by towards the end of May. So, any questions before we begin?
Any questions for Steve about CDBG or the process? Okay, thanks.
Okay.
So with that, we will open up the public hearing for the city's 2025-26 CDBG Action Plan. This is an opportunity for folks to weigh in on what they might like to see the city direct its HUD federal funding toward. Do you have an order? Are we gonna follow?
I do have an order, the roster of the applicants.
Let's do it.
All right, all right. Hitting leadoff this evening from Community Action of Skagit County is Dulce. She's, she is still here. Perfect. So we'll start off with Dulce. And on deck, we have Salem Lutheran Church. So they're, they're.
They're warming up on deck, circle.
They're warming up.
Hello, welcome. Come on up.
Not Tom. I don't have a lot of space in front, so.
That works perfect.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I stand before you today to advocate for CDBG funding. My name is Dulce Vasquez, and I'm the Resource Center Manager at Community Action of Skagit County. And I stand before you today to advocate for CDBG funding to support the continued operations of our Mount Vernon Resource Center. Our Mount Vernon office was built from a need from the community. There was a need from the community, and it was for the community. And therefore, Community Action has been around since 1979. Over the years, we've seen countless community resources come and go, but one constant has remained, our office and vital services that we provide. As outlined in our application, we remain dedicated in our commitment to serving as a welcoming resource hub where community members can access essential resources and support. Even during the unique and unexpected challenges of the pandemic, when the world was in lockdown, we adapted to ensure that our services continued uninterrupted. We were, we were able to assist our clients in accessing critical resources such as homeless services, hygiene supplies, gas vouchers, clothing, and food, helping to keep our community members afloat during uncertain times, much like now. And we've witnessed elderly couples coming to us in need of gas vouchers for their chemotherapy appointments. And we've been able to connect them with Medicaid Transportation Services for ongoing support. We've also had families with children visit our office seeking housing support. And through that, we've helped them build a relationship with our care specialists, guiding them towards alternative housing solutions or assisting them in applying for low-income housing. As highlighted in our application, the demand for our services has seen a dramatic increase. The number of Mount Vernon residents we we've served has risen by 272%. During the period from July 2021 to June 2022, our team assisted 308 households that consisted of 525 individuals. However, from July 2023 to June 2024, the number has increased to a total of 1,148 households. That's a total of 202,236 individuals. The growth reflects our ongoing efforts to to connect community members with essential community action programs, address their basic needs, and help them navigate other community resource, critical community resources. With the support of this funding, our Mount Vernon Resource Center will be able to continue to provide critical assistance to an estimated 2,500 residents, ensuring that their basic, that their basic needs are met and that they have access to ongoing case management. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Greg Grennaker from Salem Lutheran Church. Oh, there we are. I was gonna try to get this ready for you, and I failed on you.
Steve, what do you have on deck?
On deck, we've got Welcome Home Skagit.
Perfect.
And the whole, we got.
We don't need to go that far down. Thanks. Hello, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm Greg Grennaker from Salem Lutheran Church. And the purpose of our current building project that we've briefed before is support persons in our community with the greatest unmet needs, support the Welcome Home Skagit program that's in our building now for about two years, and then improve the quality of life for those with the immediate needs. And then also providing a stable starting point for those that attend the Welcome Home Skagit program and move on to to better and more programs in the community. Welcome Home Skagit, like I said, has been in our building now for about two years. There are seven days a week, nine to five. And we also support their safe parking program. We support them with our kitchens for their day shelter and night shelter cooking. And also, we have spaces for their counseling, vocational support, medical professionals that come and visit, and also recovery support counseling. Over the last seven months, we've had 6,453 visits to the shelter. And then that's by 466 individuals. So it's been very busy and increased since the last time we briefed you. The project itself, we started on February 3 construction, so it's well underway. We're putting in two family restrooms, a male restroom, a female restroom, a laundry area, and then also a multipurpose area. And then we're also remodeling six existing rooms and putting in heat and air conditioning, new drywall, flooring, and drop ceilings. And those are the rooms that Welcome Home Skagit was in previously. Right now, we've moved them up temporarily in classrooms in our upper level. Just a couple pictures. This shows that the concrete slab is 100% completed and the framing is 100% completed. This picture is, was an initial picture, but all the rooms are completed now. The plumbing is 100% completed in the new side. And this picture shows where the new washers and dryers will go. And then they've also installed the two shower units. And this one here is ADA compliance, so it's open for basically anybody. Heat and AC systems are in progress and take about another month. This picture on the left is the new systems going into the existing structure or the rooms that Welcome Home Skagit was using. And then we've just put in the big, large heat and AC unit under the building that will flow through everything. And then we've also just put in seven new doors along the hallway that Welcome Home Skagit uses, and that allow them access to all the new facilities. Building improvements, prior to February 3, we've spent $47,000 on permits, architect fees, and construction fees. Total project cost is $645,000. And of that, 585 goes to the general contractor and the subcontractors. Most of subcontractors are from this local area, so funding does go to the local community. And then $60,000 is for architectural oversight. The building permit, that was about $28,000, and then furnishings and some other minor items for the project. Project financing, we're taking $300,000 out of our reserves. $50,000 was provided by the City of Mount Vernon Tax Grant, which we very much appreciate of. Salem Village Retirement Community, the low-income housing, they've provided us with $30,000, basically a grant from them. And then to date, we've raised $70,000 now for the capital campaign, which leaves us with a construction loan of about $195,000, which we're hoping to continue to reduce via either grants or our fundraising campaign. The CBVG grant would be about 8% of the total project cost of 645,000. And that grant would go directly to the general contractor, who would distribute it to the subcontractors, and we pay that, his bill, on a monthly basis. And we'd use these funds, if they were, if they were available, prior to September 1, when we hope to complete the project completely. How will it benefit the community? City of Mount Vernon, be able to participate directly in supporting expansion of the Welcome Home Skagit program. And that's by having showers, laundry facility, laundry facilities, and all the people that use them. Provides expanded city and county-based services. It resolves a lot of the basic sanitary needs that we see people come in from living in their vehicles and walking in off the street and other programs that come in there. And then also, it's support the Family Promise Program, which is families that come and stay in our church on a rotating basis, and they have children. So the funds wouldn't go directly just to adults, it would be the families and adults. Overall, how does it support the city and HUD goals? It provides suitable living environment. It benefits low and moderate income and zero-income persons. Provides needed needed public services. It's good access, it's accessible to low, moderate, and zero-income because we're right on the bus lines and we're centrally located with Mount Vernon. We're all in Burlington. And then the funding supports persons with the greatest needs. That's a North Star principle. And it benefits the community, families, and individuals. And that's a, an objective off the HUD website. Is there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I, can I say just thank you to your church and all that is going in? In that presentation, it's a huge commitment from your organization, and it is so appreciated. Thank you for all of what you're doing. I'm sure we'll be able to help in some way.
Thank you for the previous support also.
Thank you.
And now we have from Sarah from Welcome Home Skagit.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi. So my name is Sarah. I'm the Managing Director, Welcome Home Skagit. I hate public speaking. This is, this is Anise Robles. She's our managing assistant manager at the drop-in day shelter. And here we go. Okay, so Welcome Home Skagit is seeking financial support and advocacy to sustain and expand our programs, empowering, empowering individuals on their path to stability and success. Sorry. Our mission is to create pathways to community living that remove barriers to housing stability throughout Skagit County, with a vision to create a community free of homelessness through a five-phase spectrum for transitioning those experiencing or facing homelessness to stable community living. Two of these phases are care management support services and drop-in resource and referral day shelter. Those two are currently operating. And then we're working towards a year-round overnight shelter, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing. Welcome Home Skagit is proud to operate the only drop-in day shelter in Skagit County, offering a safe and supportive space where individuals can connect, learn, heal, and foster a strong sense of community. While we are more than just a day shelter, we also serve as a vital resource and referral center, helping guests access the services they need to move forward. In addition to providing essential support services, we offer a variety of onsite classes, programs, and resources to empower our guests on their journey, including one-on-one care management, recovery support, DSHS assistance, coordinated entry assistant and reminders, medical insurance assistance, grief share support groups, smart recovery support groups, medical treatment, showers, open art therapy, therapy, daily meals, transportation support, access to internet, computers and phones, hygiene products, clothing, volunteer opportunities for peers, and employment skill building. Welcome Home Skagit actively partners with local organizations, healthcare providers, and social service agencies to provide a comprehensive support, provide, I'm sorry, to provide comprehensive support to individuals experiencing homelessness. By working together, Welcome Home Skagit maximizes resources and strengths the commute to, and strengthens the community response to homelessness. We are committed to serving those experiencing chronic homelessness and suffering from disabling conditions, including mental health challenges, substance use disorder, and severe trauma. As you may know, Welcome Home Skagit is a peer-led organization, meaning many of our staff have lived experience and therefore offer empathetic, empathetic, trauma-informed care to individuals in need. We employ, employ low-barrier housing, a low-barrier housing-first approach, integrating harm reduction, wraparound services, and peer advocacy to create an inclusive and effective shelter model. This innovative approach ensures people receive immediate support, setting them up for long-term successes. Welcome Home Skagit ensures that its efforts are measurable and effective by providing evidence-based interventions, care management, and individualized support plans. Our long-term goal of establishing a year-round, 24-hour, low-barrier shelter is a strategic and structured effort towards sustainable, toward sustainable impact. We provide essential services to vulnerable populations, including immigrants, BIPOC individuals, veterans, and survivors of domestic violence. The shelter prioritizes accessibility and ensures that individuals receive the support they need. We support a safe and clean environment for our clients by providing structured and secure shelter space, promoting sustainable resource use and ensuring access to clean drinking water, hygiene facilities, and safe conditions. We directly address fundamental health and safety needs by providing nutritious meals, fresh drinking water, hygiene facilities, medical care, care coordination, and harm, and harm reduction reproach to substance use. We also provide a secure space, free of violence, ensuring clients experience stability and support. We offer a consistent, safe, and supportive shelter environment through our day shelter, seasonal overnight shelter, and year-round safe parking initiative. To date, Salem, Greg was absolutely correct to the numbers towards the end of February. To date, Greg was absolutely correct to the numbers towards the end of February, which you guys have received the report. But to date, the day shelter has been utilized 7,586 times by 516 unduplicated individuals this year. The overnight shelter has been utilized 1,967 times by 219 unduplicated individuals. And I just want to add that this is the second shelter. There are a total of 45 beds available each night. So that's only 15 average for us. First Steps also provides an additional 25 per night. So this is a huge increase. The organization's long-term vision includes expanding its housing programs to assure sustainable low-barrier shelter options for all in need. We offer skill-building opportunities, job training, resources and employment assistance through community partnerships. Our care coordinators and pure advocates work closely with individuals to set goals and connect them with meaningful career paths that may include participation in a vocational program, which we have put together. Rooted in lived experience, we recognize the importance of purpose. Our vocational program offers peers the opportunity to train as Washington State Certified Peel Counselors through Washington Commerce. So kind of what that looks like is AA&amp;A recovery type base. You come in, you get the support you need, you take some training and now you are sponsoring those individuals, giving back to those where you started from, like an AA model. That we emphasize sobriety, harm reduction and positive interactions. The vocational program provides one-on-one guidance, recovery support, support groups and care coordination. I think I double said that. At the end of the day, we realized that these guys, no matter how much training they receive, they're still homeless. And so with your guys' support, we have started a vocational space program, which is an extension of the vocational program, which is partnered with First United Methodist Church and Skagit County Public Health. It'll provide five shelters for our peer advocates to utilize as temporary, stable living space while working toward permanent housing solutions. The shelter provides, our shelter programs provide access to educational resources, computers and telephone services and assist in navigating complex, oh, next slide. Complex systems such as healthcare, housing and employment. Our staff assist clients in learning essential life skills and developing strategies for long-term stability. Welcome Home Skagit helps individuals access essential services by providing transportation support through Skagit Transit Grant Pass Program. And when needed, our dedicated peer advocates accompany clients to important appointments and resources to ensure they receive the support they need to succeed. Welcome Home Skagit fosters a sense of belonging through peer support, community building activities and trauma-informed care. The shelter serves as a safe and supportive space where individuals can rebuild trust, connect with others and engage in meaningful civic participation. Welcome Home Skagit programs are in services aligned seamlessly with North Star core values and vital conditions by addressing the urgent needs of Skagit County's most vulnerable populations through a compassionate, innovative and collaborative approach. Welcome Home Skagit empowers individuals with the support and resources needed to transform from homelessness to stability. As advocates for our homeless community, we have initiated conversations with Skagit Valley Hospital, Skagit County Public Health, Skagit Land Trust and the Mount Vernon School District. And we humbly ask, we humbly seek your leadership in advancing these discussions to explore the use of Inkit properties and buildings for alternative housing solutions in addition to your financial contribution to ensure that this continuation of this critical work can continue to happen. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Sarah.
Questions for Sarah?
I don't have any questions for Sarah. I was just going to say that you did a fantastic job.
Thank you, I hate spiky. I can't even say it right now, I'm not reading the page.
Sometimes I think this whole layout was designed to make people nervous.
It's doing a good job, doing a good job.
Thank you.
And next we have Amanda Eche and Chuck Messenger from the Volunteers of America, Western Washington.
Hey, my name is Amanda Eche. I am here on behalf of Volunteers of America, Western Washington with our Skagit Coordinated Entry Program Manager.
Bobby Chuck Messenger.
And we can go into the next one. So we are here advocating for funding to continue our coordinated entry program. Coordinated entry, central access point for housing and homelessness services. Skagit residents call 211 to speak with a trained resource specialist. It's a no wrong door approach. All clients receive assessments and referrals based on needs. Our 2024 successes under VOA leadership, we have stabilized enrollment with improved data quality, increased Skagit 2-on-1 call volume and response rate. Our wait times consistently within the expected range for the last nine-plus months, which is less than seven minutes for anybody trying to access an enrollment or check-in. All voicemails are returned by the next morning. No one is turned away due to staffing limitations. And we have a facilitated referral process and ongoing case conferencing. Our 2025 point and time count expansions, we have expanded outreach efforts, expanded marketing and community awareness, increased partnerships, creating a more community-minded approach. And our unsheltered survey collection more than doubled from 2024 point and time count. Our challenge is the anticipated decrease in funding that we've been notified across the board with all of our contract managers and funders, the anticipated 20% reduction. We're having to risk staff layoffs and increase wait times to reach somebody to access coordinated entry. Mount Vernon has the largest population in Skagit County that we do serve for coordinated entry. Our ask is that the CDVG funds will at least help sustain the staffing levels, ensure continued rapid access to the coordinated entry system and prevent setbacks in access for Mount Vernon residents. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay, yes. So where are the funding cuts coming from? 20% you noted?
Yeah, so we, from Skagit County Public Health, we've been told that we should just expect Skagit County in general, 20% cuts from the NOPA.
And what is the current number of individuals on the coordinated entry list?
Individuals right around the 500 mark.
Is that going up, going down? What's the trend you're seeing?
It's been relatively flatlined up until the point in time count, in which time, you know, we, we actually had all the volunteers we had in the community actively making sure that everybody understood what the coordinated entry process was. We went from, I think in January, we had 100, right around 100 new enrollments. In February, we had 168. So we actually saw that upswing that we anticipated from getting out there and sharing the information.
And how are we as a community doing and moving people into housing off the list? And that's my last question, kind of a gut check.
Martha's Place, there's been an ebb and flow, you know, an expected ebb and flow. We've been able to fill all the vacancies as quick as possible with Martha's Place, plus or minus some HUD VAS units that required a little bit more TLC to make sure that they got the right clients in there. Outside of that, directly from coordinated entry, there hasn't been a whole lot of solutions. So we've been working specifically with the permanent supportive housing solution that we have available to us. As far as any other placement coming from partner agencies, couldn't speak to that specifically, but that's what those agencies are in place to do is to line people up with the available housing that's there.
Thanks for the answers. And I know we all want to try to help find more housing options for your team. Because I know that's probably the biggest barrier.
Absolutely.
That you're facing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, counsel? All right, thank you both.
Okay, and our last applicant this evening is the Center for Inclusive Entrepreneurship. And we have Victor on Zoom with us. Victor, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you for your patience and hanging in there with us.
Okay, we can hear you, Victor, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So good evening, my name is Victor Ponce. I am a bilingual business advisor and program manager for the Norcascade area for the Center for Inclusive Entrepreneurship, or CIE. And we are a nonprofit organization dedicated to empowering entrepreneurs from underserved communities, helping them start and grow their businesses. So we provide free training, advising and technical assistance to micro and small businesses. For next slide, please. So at CIE, our mission is to build inclusive prosperity by supporting rural economies, micro and small businesses, early-stage entrepreneurs and financial self-sufficiency. Many of the entrepreneurs we serve are individuals with great business ideas but limited access to resources and guidance. This is especially true for Spanish-speaking entrepreneurs here in Mount Vernon, who often face additional barriers due to language and regulatory complexity. So our goal is to ensure that all entrepreneurs, regardless of language, background or financial situation, have the support they need to turn their ideas into successful businesses that contribute to their local economy. Next slide, please. So to achieve this, we provide a range of three services, including a business training, one-on-one business advising, technical assistance. And with this, for example, we help business navigate city and state regulations. Many times they don't know where to go or they have language barriers or they are afraid to go to regulatory agencies. And also access to funding, connecting entrepreneurs with financial resources and loan opportunities. So all our services are offered in both English and Spanish, ensuring that language is never a barrier to receiving the support needed to start or grow a business. Next slide, please. So we collaborate with key community partners who refer clients to us, host training sessions and help us expand our reach. So some of these partners include, for example, Mount Vernon Chamber of Commerce, SKY Community Action. And another example is like, we are very excited next week in collaboration with the Farm Workers Center of the Catholic Services, we will be launching our first Start Simple class, our business class, specifically designed for individuals with low literacy skills. And this will be a big challenge, but it's important, it's an important step in ensuring that entrepreneurship is accessible for, to everyone, regardless of the reading or writing abilities. Okay, next slide, please. So we cover, I cover like Norcascade area. Well, we cover like a CIE, Norcascade area, Olympic Peninsula and Columbia Basin. This is our impact, our numbers for these three areas. But I think it's fair to say that at least 50% of these numbers correspond just to Mount Vernon. And also like 80% of my clients are Spanish speakers in Mount Vernon. Okay, next slide, please. So with our application, we are requesting for 30,000 dollars in CDVG funding to continue providing these essential services to entrepreneurs in Mount Vernon. So this funding will allow us to continue offering free businesses training, advising and technical assistance, expand our ability to serve Spanish-speaking entrepreneurs who currently have very few options for business supports. In fact, I think we are the only business advisor for bilingual business advisor in Mount Vernon, ensure that local businesses have access to financing opportunities. So with your support for this funding will allow us to continue powering local entrepreneurs, strengthening Mount Vernon's economy and ensuring that small businesses, especially those with the greatest barriers, have the tools they need to succeed. So thank you, thank you for your time and consideration and I'd be happy to answer any question.
Thank you, Victor. Counsel, questions for Victor? Yes, Councilmember Broxman.
I was at an event for Triumph Teen Center this fall and was able to meet Victor and one of his compatriots there. And so appreciate the work you're doing, great to learn what you're up to. I was curious if you have applied for economic development funds from the county for, as an additional revenue source? And not, maybe that's something to meet and talk about and see if that's eligible activity.
I'm not sure, so maybe I should add to my executive director, but I don't think so. But it's interesting opportunity. I would love to learn more about that.
Other questions? Victor, thank you for being with us tonight, thanks for your patience online as well.
And those are our five applicants that wanted to do a presentation this evening, the other two chose not to, so.
Then we will, would anyone else like to address counsel regarding the CDVG action plan tonight? Seeing that, we will close the public hearing.
Any questions for me or anything to do before next meeting?
Is the deadline, has deadline already come for any additional nonprofits to apply?
Yeah, it has, yep. But with that, keep in mind, we will have our round of 1590 potentially this fall, so. And there'll be an opportunity for others to do that. And I think we may see more applicants for that because as we found with some of these HUD funds, they're getting more restrictive in their uses, where 1590 doesn't have the restrictions. So something to keep in mind as we go forward as well.
Richard?
Yeah, a couple of questions, if I can remember them both. One is on that point about restrictions. And I was worried about if Welcome Home Skagit, any other new recipients of the CDVG funding had any problems with billing or everybody's learned the ropes and it's going well. Because it is, it is a big lift and burden that, that funding source.
That's a great comment and question. And honestly, we have a great consultant, Tammy Jackson, who helps all of the applicants through the whole process from subrecipient agreements all the way down the line to make sure that everybody gets their paperwork done and in a timely manner as well.
I really appreciate you mentioning 1590 and just making sure that we're using those funds the way that's going to help those organizations with the least overhead. Thank you for that. And I think my second question was, we still have like a services pot of 10 or 15% and then a capital pot? And could you explain what should these fit in which? And I, I've only begun to review the applications, I'm not even sure they were all in there. So it's on me, I'm sure, but maybe you have a handle on. Yes, sir, there it is.
Somebody's going to ask me a question that was in advance, so I was prepared this year. Thank you. Yeah, the administrative piece is 20% of the grant revenue. The public services is 15%. And then the amount that's left over can go towards the capital, so.
So and 15% is always the one where there might be a little bit of competition or smaller number. And so how many people applied for that and for how much money?
We have five applications for that 15%. Yeah.
How many, so we only have seven applications?
We have seven applications total.
And five of the seven?
Yep.
Want the administrative services?
Right, right, public services.
Well, that's going to be a problem.
It's going to be challenging for counsel, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
No, thank you. I changed my mind. I withdraw the question, Steve.
All right. Sorry for that bad news. Where's Doug? I should have had him deliver that news. Sorry.
Questions about the process or stump Steve?
Stump Steve.
Steve, thank you. Thanks for all the work on that. Appreciate it.
Thanks, council.
Item B is a street closure request for Tulip Festival Street Fair and Parks and Enrichment Director Jennifer Berners with us. Hi, Jennifer.
Good evening again, council and mayor. So here for you this evening to ask you to approve a street closure for our annual Tulip Festival. As Ellen alluded to when she was up here speaking to you, they are asking to extend the, the closure up to Milwaukee this year. And she gave a great explanation as to why they were looking at trying to do that, to help them regain some of what they had lost when they had to restructure the booth sizes and how they were able to do the layout. The, everything else stays the same, it's just extending it a couple blocks down to Milwaukee. The street closure is from Cleveland Avenue from the north side of Milwaukee to the south end of Division. And that it will be beginning Thursday, April 17th at about 2:00. And reopening on, here we go, reopening on Sunday, April 20th at 9:00 a.m. However, the section of Cleveland Avenue between Milwaukee and Snoqualmie will remain closed until Monday, April 21st, about 10:00 a.m., because they, that's the new section there, because they, that's where they're going to be putting their stage in a large canopy. And so they've got to have time for that to get broken down on Monday morning. So with that, staff is recommends approval of the street closure request for the Tulip Street Fair.
Did anyone else feel like the thunder added some level of authority to Jennifer's presentation? That was a nice touch. Any questions for Jennifer on the street closure or for Ellen? She's here as well. Thank you for being here, Ellen.
I'd move to approve the downtown street closure for Tulip Festival.
Second.
Question by Gary in the second bite. Any more discussion on that? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Ellen, thanks for hanging in with us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. For item seven, I will ask our city attorney if there's a need to call the mayor and city council members into executive session.
Oh.
No.
And with that, we will adjourn the City of Mount Vernon City Council meeting for Wednesday, March 26, 2025, at 8:51 p.m.